Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, 5:01 PM. Great to see you all. Thank you, board colleagues, for being here. Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff and to any guests that we have present, both in person and online. Welcome, and thank you for being here. Before I continue, we do have language interpreters in different languages. If you do need an interpreter, please let one of our staff members know, and we will have an interpreter for you. Tenemos interpretes disponibles en esta tarde. Si usted necesita un intérprete, por favor, deje uno de nuestros empleados saber para que le podemos ayudar con interpretación para esta reunión en esta tarde. So again, if you do need a language interpreter, please let us know, and we will make sure to have one for you. Again, welcome, and we will go ahead and read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. Read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome. Thanks, everybody, for being here. With that, Ms. Smith, please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark here.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, here.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. With that, may I have a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda, please?
No, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? There are none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're going to jump right into our agenda. First up is item two, awards and recognition. Again, one of all of our favorite time of the year is when we get to celebrate our employees, our scholars, and their families, and so we would invite Dr. Jones and his team to come forward as we recognize our employee Employee of the Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to see you. I'm so happy that I can present to you our Employees of the Month. We have our certified and our classified worker, and I don't know if anyone was able to lift that on the screens there, but I will just advance it. The first Employee of the Month that we are going to recognize is Ms. Karina Chames, and she is a fifth-grade teacher at Central Middle School, as nominated by Sarah Maderos. I'm wondering if that grade right there may be wrong, but yes. I'm sorry, there was some misinformation. That's Lowell Broome, where she is a fifth-grade teacher. It was nominated by Sarah Maderos, and she said, "I would like to nominate Karina Chames for the Staff Member of the Month. She is very deserving because of her commitment, dedication, and overall care for her students. She takes the time to plan with intention and has a proactive versus reactive mentality for her lessons. She is always willing to listen and grow to become even better. Her confidence has soared, and she is willing to let teachers come watch her teach as a positive role model in math. Her students enjoy her daily, and her effectiveness as a teacher continues to be exceptional." That is from Ms. Sarah Maderos, and I commit to you our Certified Employee of the Month, Ms. Karina Chames. Our second Employee of the Month that we will be recognizing will be from our classified staff, and this person is by the name of Ms. Leslie Milcas. Ms. Leslie Milcas. Yes. She is a Central Kitchen Assistant Manager at the Central Kitchen, and she, I'm sorry, thank you. She has faced staffing, says Central Kitchen has faced challenges staffing the warehouse supervisor and inventory specialist positions this semester, and Leslie has taken ownership of the responsibility. She has taken on additional tasks such as checking in orders, operating the pallet jack to move pallets throughout the building, and maintaining the inventory in the kitchen and warehouse. She's identified inefficiencies in the kitchen and quickly improved them. She has also excelled in her normal responsibilities of leading the team of food service assistants and the production supervisor in Central Kitchen. Leslie's work is not seen by many in the school or community, but it has helped ensure that the 19 schools that receive food from Central Kitchen always receive the correct products. She has gone above and beyond without being asked and taken responsibility for any work that needs to be done. She leads by example and makes Central Kitchen better every day." That is from Michael Shorts.
All right. Good evening, Board President and members of the board. Dr. Stubblefield, I'm Dr. Sarah Lucero, here to present our Student of the Month. And for the first student, we have Adakai Perry, who is at Bethel. All right, Adakai, he walks into the building with the biggest smile, which you can see right now, and he leaves the end of the day with an even bigger smile. He shows every day that he's real and ready to work in pre-K and has positive daily attendance. And he is truly the motto of every day better in every way. And I asked him what's his favorite thing about school, and he said his teacher, Ms. Winter. And with him, he has his two brothers, his mom, his grandma, and his great-grandma here. Let's celebrate Adakai. All right, our elementary student, we have Chris Camacho Torres. All right, Chris is an eighth-grade student. I'm sorry, wrong. He is going to be an eighth-grade student, but for now, he is a fifth-grade student at Quindaro Elementary. He completes his homework every day. He's organized. He makes certain that his tasks are done, and he was nominated for outstanding academics. If you really want to see him come alive and electric in his learning, check him out during math class. He is so excited with an energy. He loves using manipulatives and real-world math, but if you ask him, he might say that science is his favorite subject. The connections between science and math allow him to showcase his academics in the classroom, and he'll use these skill sets when he grows up, either as a chef or a soccer player. Let's celebrate Chris. All right, now for the eighth grader. We have Josue Duran Villa Yobos. I'm so excited to tell you about Josue, because we all love a good comeback story. And after last year, you know how middle school can be, this year, he has rocked it out. He is now a wrestler. He won our district middle school tournament in his weight class. He has doubled his GPA. This kid is going places. And his involvement in the school is amazing, his overall behavior. And when I asked him, "What inspired you just to step up this year and do so awesome?", he said his mom, who is here, and his family. He has lots of family here to support him. So let's celebrate Josue, and he's still deciding what he wants to be when he grows up, so we'll see him soon and find out, so. All right, and for our high school senior, she couldn't make it tonight. She's a very busy lady, Naveya Rosa, who is a senior at Washington High School. She is an outstanding cadet in our ROTC program. She, her teacher said she is "one of the most academically gifted students I have ever had the pleasure to teach." But that's really not what sets her apart. Her ability to stand up and fight for what she believes in and defend her peers and make a safe and effective learning environment. But what's even more amazing is she does it with dignity and respect while being polite. So we are so excited to see what she is going to do in our community after graduation. Let's give it up for Naveya Rosa. And that concludes our Student of the Month for January.
Nice.
Thank you all, and we'll go ahead and invite Mr. Simmons up. As we, next on our agenda board, we will recognize our, we have our All-State Recognition of All Activities. And as they make, as they make their way to the podium, just a reminder, after we recognize our students and scholars and athletes, we will take a brief recess. We will take photos with our Employees of the Month, our Students of the Month and their families, and then with our Fall Scholars, Scholar-Athletes as well. So we'll take a brief recess after this to take photos and then reconvene with, on our agenda. Good evening, Mr. Simmons.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Russell, board members, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield. I am Samuel Simmons, the Director of Athletics Activities and Student Development, here with the pleasure of acknowledging some of our Fall Scholar-Athletes and their amazing individual as well as team accomplishments. With us today, we have scholars being recognized for various reasons. Some were voted to their All-State teams in their respective sports, others either placed and/or competed in their All-State activities. So we do have several scholars who couldn't make it today because they are obviously busy with other activities, but we want to definitely acknowledge those who are present. First off, we have three members of the Schlegel Football Team, all of them making four A honorable mention. First up is Senior Wide Receiver Defensive End Ronnie Bush. Next up is Senior Running Back, Wide Receiver, and Safety Joseph Richardson. And lastly, for the Schlegel Football Team, we have Senior Offensive Line Man, Defensive Line Man Sabian Ross. And the Stallions are coached by Head Coach Cern Makin. We have a few representatives from Harmon High School, one for soccer and one for football. Up first from soccer, we have not only making 5A second team, Kansas' second team, but also our Metallar Conference Player of the Year, Junior Forward Ivis Troches. Harmon Hawks Soccer is coached by Head Coach David Bean. Representing Harmon Football, we have 5A Honorable Mention, a Running Back DB freshman, Darian Myrick. Harmon Hawks Football is coached by Head Coach Keith O'Neill. We have four members of the Washington Football Team here to be recognized, all making 5A Honorable Mention. Two of the individuals could not be here with us today. Those two individuals are sophomore wide receiver DB Nick Carter and junior quarterback Sabian Stone, who are both engaged in other activities. But here today with us, we do have Senior Defensive End Xavier Groves. And freshman DN Zavion Haslett. Wildcats are coached by Head Coach Cam Smith. From Sumner Academy, we have representatives from girls tennis and boys soccer. We've been doing our homework, and we're fairly confident that this young lady is, if not the only one, one of the very few individuals who have qualified for state tennis throughout our entire history of KCK Sports. She is a 5A State Qualifier, Senior Kenneth Rodriguez Acosta. And the Saber Tennis Head Coach is Coach Jerrel Cotton. From our Boys Soccer Team at Sumner Academy, we have 5A Kansas First Team Representative, Junior Midfielder Christian Gomez. And the Summer Boys Soccer Team is coached by Head Coach Brian Wright. Brian White, sorry, Coach. Make sure I get the pictures of those scholars in there. Sorry about that. I do want to make sure before the Scholar-Athletes exit, we take one group picture of all the Scholar-Athletes and their All-State performances. So you got to slide back over really quickly. Sorry, Dr. Gil. Perfect. Thank you, Scholar-Athletes. The last group really needs no introduction, because I think they've been here several years running, and that is the Sumner Academy Debate Team, which just competed. They just competed a couple weeks ago, came up just a tad bit short, but we are still obviously proud of them and their second-place runner-up finish for 5A State, our Sumner Academy Debate Team. Representing the team today, we have sophomore Jonathan Sosa Santos. Senior Kaylee Ann Milborn. Junior Gabrielle Adurande. Junior Juan Antabarros. Junior Yard Alvarado Martinez. Junior Diego Solis Moreno. Team Manager Melanie Moore, who's a junior. And Sumner Academy is coached by Zachary Johnson. Congratulations, Scholars.
Thank you all. We're going to take a brief recess while we take photos with our scholars, our Employees of the Month, their families, and staff, so give us a brief moment. We'll take a recess. Thank you. take a recess. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Thanks for giving us a quick break to take those photos. Again, congratulations to our Employees of the Month, to our Scholars of the Month, our Scholar Athletes, and to everyone who is a huge supporter and helps them in any way that you do, family, staff, friends. Congratulations to all of you. We are very proud of you and all the work you do. So, we will continue with our agenda. We are in Agenda Item 3, our Community Comment Section. Again, just as a reminder, everyone is welcome to participate in community comment just as long as you sign up for comment the Monday at noon before the Board Meeting. You will have three minutes to speak. Please share your name, and then your time will start. Make sure that our Board Clerk has your information, your contact information, so that we can reach back out to you afterwards if there's any follow-up that must happen. And then just a reminder that speakers should state their name and make sure your contact information is here. You will have three minutes to speak. After that, I will gently remind you when your time is up. And as well, this is a one-way communication. Speakers may address the Board about policy-related issues and general community concerns. We ask that derogatory or critical remarks about specific district personnel or students are prohibited. These matters are deemed confidential per policy and must be presented to appropriate administrative personnel. So with that, I will go ahead and call our first person who has signed up, Scott Harding. Is Mr. Harding here? You may approach the podium. Good evening, Mr. Harding. And your three minutes will start once you give your name. Thank you.
I'd like to make sure everybody speaks in their microphone and stuff because I can hardly hear and a lot of other people's can in the audience. Another thing I'd like to say is congratulations to all the employees and the kids on their achievements, and I'm sure that everybody appreciates that. And my name is Scott Harding. I'm in Wyandotte County. We have the Wyandotte County Property Tax Protesters, and this comment is on something like that. We've some citizens had some concerns, and they've done some audits on the credit cards. They call them P-cards. And there was some discrepancies, and there was a bunch of personal charges on these cards. And what I would like to know from each personal Board Member here, is that acceptable? I want to hear it from them personally. And what is gonna be done about it in the future? And from the past, I'd like all the records from the past three years to current for all the P-cards or credit cards that have been used in the USD 500. It seems like there's a lot of this stuff going on, and it's just been brushed underneath the rug. And I think it needs to be taken care of because the taxpayers are paying this money for the kids, not for the enjoyment of other people. And it's been going on in Wyandotte County for a long time, and we're finding it out, so we're putting it out. And we'd like to get it taken care of, and I know the kids sure would too. Appreciate your time. If there's any questions, you know my email and you know my phone number. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Next on our agenda, I would invite Avery Gomez.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Hello, my name is Avery Jackson. I also go by Avery Gomez in the school district. I am actually a Head Start teacher at KCKEC, and I'm also a third-generation educator who grew up right here in KCK, and his children will also be attending this district as well. I'm saying that not just to brag, but to show you that I have a deep love for this community and the people in it, which is why I chose to work here in KCKPS and to move my family back here. But sometimes I feel like that love blinds me from the red flags that should make me run, and I find myself creating excuses for the district instead of calling them out. Well, that is, I did do that, not today. We should be partners who are working together to create the best learning environment for students as continuous learners. But when it comes to early education, it feels like we are at odds against one another. We are in this toxic relationship where early childhood is treated as if what we do is somehow easier, less than, or has no value compared to our K-12 counterparts. And that isn't a good feeling, especially when you take into consideration that we typically have more students with less instructional time, less plan time, less teachers, less pairs, less resources, and less support. And we're told to make it work. And we do, but it's hard. A lot harder than we make it look, and we make it look good. I would never allow my daughters or my friends to be in the kind of relationship where they are treated like they are less than or not worthy of being invested in, and where they're being ignored, feel frustrated, and come home hurting daily. So why am I allowing this for myself? This question was hard for me to answer. And what I ended up coming up with ultimately is that I don't feel that this relationship is too far gone and that there is time for it to be mended. Things could still change, so please, take the time to come see what we really do and how much of an impact we really make on this community. And please, be with us for the good times and the bad. And please, support early education so there are less bad times. I know that this district can be great. I know that for a fact because I grew up here, I work here, my grandmother worked here, my mother worked here. It is a place that I love, and if I didn't feel that way, I would not be here. The problem is that we need to work together to make that happen. And this seems to be something that is really difficult to do right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Next, I would call up Ms. Callie Baker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Board and Dr. Stubblefield. My name is Callie Baker. My pronouns are she/her. I am an early childhood special education teacher. I'm here with just a few of my colleagues tonight to wish you a happy School Board Appreciation Month and to advocate for all KCKPS early childhood programs, including infant toddler services, preschool, and special education. We provide early intervention and kindergarten readiness for our district's most impressionable learners. KCK early childhood has been changing. We have more students, we have more vacancies, and more on our workloads than ever before. But a lot has not changed. We continue to be four early childhood sites and I believe three elementary schools with over 1,000 students. We continue to prepare children in KCK for K-12 education and beyond with infant toddler services, family and community programs, and high-quality childcare that is not simply daycare, but truly is school. In our mixed-age and mixed-abilities classrooms, we teach things like letter ID and phonological awareness, but also how to like speak at all and how to use communicative gestures instead of biting. We teach children how to hold a pencil and how to write their name, but also how to do things like eat with a fork and drink from a straw. Our curriculum is rich and very intricate with concepts like journaling and addition and vocabulary words like proboscis. But we also change diapers, like a lot of diapers. And in our program's collaborative classroom model, students learn how to truly just be at school and how to coexist with kids who are different from them during a very critical period of development, and it builds such a strong foundation for the rest of school and for the rest of their lives. We are a complex and incredible program, and we need to be uplifted and invested in. We need consistent staffing and adequate plan time so that we can prepare and execute our complicated lesson plans and our very complex learning environments. We need lower ratios to keep our very active and very dependent students safe. And because I don't know if you have ever been in a room with two adults and 20 kids who are developmentally like between the ages of baby and five, but it's exactly what it sounds like. I think you can picture it. And if you can't picture it, you should come visit us. And if you can picture it, you should come visit us anyways because I think we might surprise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next, I would invite Ms. Heather Turi to the podium.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Stubblefield.
Evening.
My name is Heather Turi, and I'm proud to say I've devoted my career to early childhood education. After being an early childhood special education teacher elsewhere, I joined KCKPS 18 years ago as an instructional coach and have served as the principal at KCKECC for the past 10 years. During this time, I've witnessed the profound impact our early childhood programs have made on students and families. Elementary principals often praise our preschool programs, noting the readiness of their kindergarteners who have attended school with us. Parents frequently share how quickly they see significant progress in their children, sometimes after just a few short weeks. It's a joy to see older siblings return with their parents and tell us about elementary school and how good they're doing, how well they're doing, but how much they miss preschool. Our Head Start wraparound services also create life-changing opportunities for families well beyond their preschooler. Each family receives support from a social worker to determine and meet a family goal such as continuing their education, saving for a car or a home, or finding employment. One example that really stands out in my mind is a refugee family who arrived here with nothing. Thanks to our family service workers' collaboration with local agencies, they received kitchen and living room furniture as well as a bed for everyone in the family. and living room furniture as well as a bed for everyone in the family. You can only imagine the tears of joy from everyone involved on the day that an empty house became a true home. Despite our reach, serving nearly 600 students just at KCK ECC alone, I'm often surprised how few colleagues and community members know about our work. That's why our leadership team extended an open invitation for each of you to visit us. We'd love for you to see our incredible classrooms in action. I promise you'll leave with a smile, but you might need a nap after keeping up with our energetic students and staff. In honor of School Board Appreciation Month, I'd like to end by sharing thank you cards from our youngest students in our district. Thank you for your dedication to KCKPS as a whole, and we hope to welcome you to KCK ECC soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And Board, if you haven't noticed, on the back wall, you can see a nice thank you sign from our team. So thank you for the nice art that we have in our boardroom. Because of you, we appreciate you. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. And as we do after every community comment, time a member of our staff, our leadership team, will reach out to folks who have spoken tonight to see if there is any follow-up that you would like from our team, and then a report will be given to the Board from those follow-up items. Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Agenda item four, consent agenda. Board, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Brownlee Page.
I'd like to have the answer now, but with Iron Mountain, did we clear up everything? Did we receive all the items? Did they still hold us back?
So I believe, and I don't want to misspeak, and I don't see Wayne in the room. I know Ms. Smith and Wayne have been working with Iron Mountain to get some of those things. I believe we've received everything back, and it's an NCO that they were supposed to send back to us, but I will make sure that Wayne follows up with the full Board to give an update. I believe there were still some outstanding invoices, but we were waiting to make sure that they had completed their portions, from my understanding, before we paid some of those invoices and the credit that was given to the district from some of their delays on their behalf. But I will have Wayne, in case I'm misspeaking. Mr. Correll will follow up with the full Board with an update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Any additional questions? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Board, next up is an update from our KCK Public Library. We have in front of us the informational item, the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Director's Report. Ms. Laura Hunt, good evening.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield, thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna go over some of our statistics from 2024, and we want to just understand our trends so that can inform our strategy moving forward. And we're gonna be looking at data a little bit differently going forward, and we'll talk about that a little bit in my presentation. But we'll start with this review of 2024. So first, circulation. You probably know that is when people check out our physical items or our digital items through our online platform Hoopla. So we had more than 642,000 circulations in 2024. That's on par with 2023, but what I found interesting was that our digital checkout actually went up about 20,000 and our physical went down about 20,000. So it ended up being about even, but that'll be a trend that we'll want to keep an eye on. Digital usage in libraries across the country has been going up, especially since 2020. So we, of course, want to make sure that we're providing that service to our community in ways that they need it and want to see it. And then I wanted to share with you some of our popular items that are going out in those circulations. So if you are interested in putting any of these on hold or checking them out from our branches, you definitely can. Some of them are also available on Hoopla digitally. And in 2024, our branch and website visits, this is an interesting one. So you can see the orange line up there actually spikes very high in October and then crashes down very low going into December. October, we launched our new website and logo, so we had a lot of traffic. And then we had some issues with Google Analytics and tagging, and so those statistics are not truly accurate, I don't think, but we're gonna be watching that just to make sure over the next couple of months, to make sure that stabilizes. Our IT department believes they have fixed that issue. But branch visits, you can see kind of maintain steady. They go up in the summer. That is very typical. We are actually updating our door counters as well to make sure we're capturing everybody. Right now, we have them on our gates, which is sometimes removed from the meeting rooms, so people might be getting into the meeting rooms, not getting counted. So we're gonna do some updates to that to make sure we get accurate numbers going forward. And looking at our programs and outreach, you can see that we had an increase in programs in July, which is typical for libraries. Summer reading program starts then, we get a lot of kids coming in for summer, and then in August, there's a dip as we prep. We reduce our programs a little bit as we prep for fall and back to school. And then we have a lot of great fall programming, including our Halloween trunk or treats, which everybody loves, and there's a high attendance for that. But generally, we had about a 12% increase in programs and outreach from 2023 to 2024. So we'll be watching that trend as well. And then our attendance for those programs and outreach. So we had an 18% increase in attendance overall, and we had a nice spike here from March to May, and that was really thanks to Turner. They did a virtual recorded program, and so we counted those in our programming statistics. Moving forward, we're gonna separate those out so that we can kind of see the difference between our recorded programs and the in-person attendance. But again, we have great attendance at our programs, and that continues to go up. I think people really appreciate those offerings that we have. It includes everything from storytimes and book clubs to our career programs, all those great things that you hear about. And then I just wanted to give you some fun pictures. You probably have been at some of these events or seen these pictures before throughout 2024. Fun with Eagle Days. We just had our 2025 Eagle Days, so you'll see some more about that in our next presentation. We do all kinds of stuff around the community, and if you're ever interested in coming to any of our programs, please feel free. We'd love to have you there. And now I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Hunt tonight from the Board?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Brownlee Page?
Do you have any new programs you'd like to institute?
You know, we have our librarians and our library supervisors and our associates that really connect with the community to determine what the needs are and what people want to see. So I don't have anything that I'm like, oh, I would just 100% love to do it. I'd just like to hear from our staff and our community what they would like to see.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions? Hearing none. If not, is there a motion to accept the library director's report?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Rachel Russell, yes. Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, next, we have the Turner Library Quarterly Report as an item for you. Is there a motion to accept the informational item for the Turner Quarterly Report as submitted by Ms. Hunt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Next, Board, we are on item 6A. First, on the agenda, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the General Obligation Bond Cell Resolution, recommended by Mr. Steve Lilly and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Board, you'll recall that at our last special meeting, we had a presentation from Mr. Avi who went through the bond cell resolution with the Board and answered questions. But if there are any additional questions, and I don't know if he may be online, Dustin might be. Is he here? Oh, there he is. Okay, I didn't see it. Dustin is here to answer any questions tonight. Otherwise, Dr. Stubblefield, anything else to add?
Nothing to add. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you again. I would also just again like to say thank you to our community, to Wyandotte County, who helped pass the bond that will help change our community and our district in many positive ways. So thank you to everybody. Thank you to our voters for all that you've done and continue to do for this district and for our scholars. Next, agenda item, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of Curriculum Associates iReady Math Curriculum Expansion for grades six through eight in the amount of $1,295,457.9, funded by the Curriculum and Instruction Budget, as submitted by Mr. Cole Amaya, Dr. Fernandez Flores, and Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Brownlee Page?
My concern, and I've heard all the information about both programs, but the one thing that most parents still ask about both, and I noticed in the part where it said "parents", it just says "Parents receive student performance data that includes progress". Well, a lot of them need some tutoring. They want some help. They want to help their children. And what are we offering to them so that they can get some help to help their kids? I mean, we're spending a lot of money for this program. There ought to be some help for the parents. They're asking for help. And then I often hear, well, we hit the math night. Well, I might need help once a week. What do we offer? Where can they go so that we can make sure they get the help that they need? I've tried to help nieces and nephews. I can figure it out, but they don't do it the same way I did it. So parents, they want help, they need help. Where is that in this program? Because the only thing I saw is that they'll receive the data at their progress report. Well, before I get the progress report, if my child is failing or needs some assistance, where can I get that? And I'm looking at what we're spending. I want us to get our bang for our buck. Where is the tutoring part for the parents?
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Mr. Amaya is here at the podium.
Yeah, so in iReady, they do actually have an online family center, and on the online family center, it offers updates on the curriculum, and it offers different types of lessons that parents can access and look through, and it has a whole bunch of different resources on that website in terms of like what the reporting does and how it improves students' learning. Also, specific lessons to help kids work through skill gap issues. Also, the kids' personalized learning in MyPath is something that's digital, and so kids do have devices, and they continue to work on those things at home.
Where can they go to get this? And then what about for the grandparents who are trying to help the kids they're raising? Maybe I'm not that computer-suavey. Where do I go to get some help? I want to help my baby. I just don't know where to go.
So I, Ms. Paige.
Say they have that.
Yeah.
Where do they get their information?
So it's a part of the curriculum. If they are having trouble accessing it, they should reach out to their, either their teacher or their school principal, and they can provide the support, or you can direct them to Mr. Amaya, and we can work with those who are trying to navigate it. But they definitely can let their teachers know, let their principals know, and they can provide that support. We also appreciate the feedback about the ongoing support, and we can assess that to see if that's something that is feasible or what that looks like. The site, what we've found that parents are more likely to go to their school site, so we can have principals to just, when they have FA nights and those kind of things, to ask if they are wanting additional support and to evaluate what that can look like.
I respect that, but some people don't know where to go, and they need some help.
Right.
And where do I go to get the site he just mentioned? Because that's just like the Welcome Center. We sit there and nine different groups said, we got a Welcome Center. What do they do? So somehow, we're not marketing that part out so that everybody gets the information. They don't have it.
So that's what I'm saying. If they can contact us, we'll put it out. We can put some communication out about where it's located, but if you know of specific individuals who need that, if you direct them to us, we can help them navigate it.
Do you have additional questions? I think the classroom teachers are a great place to start, but I think there are always areas where we can continue to improve how we communicate with parents and families who want to help their kiddos. But I think starting in the classroom, I think is a great place to at least ask that first initial question where most parents or grandparents or adults have the relationships. But I think, to your point, Ms. Brownlee Page, I think there are areas that we can improve, how we communicate, how adults can continue to care for and support their kiddos at home.
I respect that, but when we pay millions of dollars, I wish we would think of that at the beginning. I know the classroom is the place to start, but then what do you do for that parent who doesn't feel comfortable? And I'm not saying anybody is shunning them away, but they don't feel comfortable. So I just think we need to, as much as we're paying, they're paying taxes, let's give them their bang for their buck.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments on?
You'd have one.
Yes, Mr. Marlin?
In this line, I see that the student is 4369, and is that correct, what I'm saying? 4,369, and the classroom teacher's 45? Is that suitable? Is that a suitable number? Or you're comfortable with that number? Or are you looking for more? Is that sufficient for that number of students?
I'm sorry, are you looking at the atomized, the purchasing price? The atomized?
I'm looking at the iReady partners. Am I looking at the wrong iReady partners?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what number you're referring to. I'm sorry, I have all the presentation in front of me.
Okay, the middle school buildings?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Is that the students, 4369, the classroom teacher's 45, is the numbers compatible? The students, the breakdown in the students, the teachers?
So if you're asking if we have enough materials, that is enough for all the students and the teacher to have the materials that they have?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we pulled that directly from if it a campus in terms of active students and enrollments and pieces like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions on this item?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, next item is item 6C. It is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of Open SciEd Biology for High School in the amount of $91,704.14, funded by the Curriculum and Instruction Budget, as submitted by Cole Amaya, Dr. Fernandez Flores, Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll open the floor for questions or discussion. Ms. Brownlee Page, and then Ms. Russell?
I don't have a question.
Yes.
I'm gonna say the same thing. Where do they go if they need some help?
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't ask this question beforehand, so if we don't have an answer, that's fine, but if we can follow up, I'd greatly appreciate it. So science is one of our subjects that currently, my understanding, have a lot of, what is the word I'm looking for? Is the place where we have a lot of vacancies at the high school level. With the company that we contract with, are those teachers then using this curriculum? Or are they using something else? Because I thought before that they used a Florida state curriculum through the pro a Florida State curriculum through the Pro... Proximity. And so, I guess my question is, if we're buying curriculum for a pool of our staffing that we are currently actively, for the last couple of years, have struggled to fill positions, does this curriculum expire before we actually... Like, this is a cycle, and this is just a cycle of curriculum for the next few years, but what is the telltale of whether or not we actually use it?
Proximity use our curriculum. They, at the beginning, and Mr. Amaya can speak to all of the planning and prep that goes in for them and how our instructional coaches support those teachers. They use our curriculum.
So whatever we purchase, proximity utilizes. Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Brownlee Page?
I asked, I made the comment, but where will they go to get help?
It's the same process as for the other curriculum. They do share the information when they're sharing out the resources. The classroom teacher is the first person or the principal, and if somebody's having difficulties navigating, we'll do the same. But it's in the same information when they send it out. And the high school students actually have their MacBooks, and all of it's digital. But if you go online, all of those resources are online. If they don't have access to that, if they reach out to their teachers, they can work with their principals and the curriculum department to get them the support that they need.
Is it on the website, on our page?
Yes.
Yeah. OpenSciEd itself is an open resource, so it exists. The entire curriculum is an open resource, so anybody can access it, every single lesson, at every grade level that they offer it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, next item is Item 6D. Recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of 44 Variable Air Volume (VAV) boxes from ServPro of Lee Summit for Arrowhead Middle School in the amount of $459,648, as recommended by Mr. Carell, Mr. Lilly, and Dr. Stubblefield.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Ms. Russell, and then Dr. Nguyen.
This item did not clarify where the funds for this was going to come from. Do we have that information?
Wayne is coming forward.
I apologize for missing the earlier inquiry, by the way. If you look in the under explanation under the second paragraph at the very bottom, it says this project will be funded utilizing 2016 bond investment revenue.
Is there attachment? Is there attachment?
And this is just a reminder. We discussed this situation at Arrowhead. Like, we need to replace it, and as we're navigating the legal components of it, this is where the funds would be coming from. And if we're reimbursed from any entity, it would be replaced. But we need to order them in order to have them in time to install, to be installed by spring break.
Dr. Nguyen?
I just, is there attachment to this item?
Mm-hmm. There is not.
No.
So what was Mr. Carell referencing?
In the memo under explanation, it's the second paragraph, last sentence, last sentence of the second paragraph regarding... Oh, no, that's not right. I'm sorry.
It's under background.
First paragraph.
First paragraph, last sentence.
Last sentence of the first paragraph.
I can bring it to you if you like.
I see.
Any additional questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes. I will also ask that the board receive the balance of this fund. This is not a fund item that, when we did have a discussion, that was suggested that I recall, and I could be wrong. I've had lots of conversations about facilities and bonds. But I don't recall this revenue stream, and I would just like to be updated on what the balance of that revenue stream is, and we can have a further conversation after that.
Mr. Clements manages that.
Yes. I'm sorry, who'd you say?
Mr. Clements manages that.
Okay.
And Mr. Lilly is not here tonight, but we can make sure we get the information.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, board, we are on Agenda Item 7. Tonight, we will hear a report from the Wyandotte Comprehensive Special Education Cooperative, and would welcome Dr. Lori to the podium. Good evening, Dr. Lori.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Russell, our distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield. Thank you for this opportunity to give a sped update for the first half of the school year. As always, we will present a more detailed, slightly longer report at the end of the school year, once we receive our compliance report from the state. Of course, our sped mission and vision continues to be our focus and our driving force. As you see here, our sped priorities continue to align to our district's strategic plan, KISA, and BARD goals. And so, who do we serve in our community? We have, we serve in our cooperative 4,360 students. That's 91% of our students being served under IDEA, and about 9% of our students being served under Gifted. This is a third, this is an increase of 33 students from this time last year. Specifically looking at Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, 74% of our total students served in special education are served right here in our community, Kansas City, Kansas School District, which leaves the remaining 26% of the students collectively being served in Piper and Bonner. We did have a decrease in our Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Special Education student enrollment from last year during this timeframe, about 20 students. However, we usually see a number increase by the end of the school year due to students transferring in, due to students becoming eligible for special education initially. At this time, I would like to bring up to the podium the Director of Special Education Programs, Ms. Dana Nelson, to provide an update regarding special education staff.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, to Vice President Russell, to our esteemed board, and also our Superintendent Dr. Stubblefield and community, and also our colleagues.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to begin first with a celebration of ongoing and collaborative partnerships with our Human Resources Department, Professional Learning, and Fort Hays State University. The Special Education Department funds and supports staff seeking alternative licensure for special education through varied pathways. Today, as a special education team, we celebrate every milestone. We celebrate our continued learning for staff, and in the journey of continuous growth and improvement. The following Kansas City, Kansas Public School educators earned master's degrees in special education during the summer and fall of 2004. They include, this past summer, Paola Avila from Emi Pearson as an SLC teacher, Felicia Covington at Schlegel High School as an SLC teacher, Debbie Ellison, who is an SLC itinerant teacher with the private parochial schools, and also Frank Rushton, Lakeisha Williams, who serves as an SLC teacher at Bridges Academy, Amy Wilkinson at Emi Pearson as well, and then Jamie Song at Gloria Willis as SLC. Then in December, which is photographed here in this picture, of which I was able to tend as a representative, we also had the following three graduates. Kevin Nelson of Arrowhead in the Behavior Support Class, also Allison Patterson at Grant Elementary as an SLC, and then Kristen Shuck as an SLC at West Park. And we'll continue to elevate those who are graduating and present even more that should be graduating in the summer at our next presentation. The next thing that we'd like to look at is the impact of our coaching, and part of that helps to not only help with our recruitment, but our retention and continued growth of teachers. As you can see, we're providing job-embedded collaboration solutions, seeking with all of our partners, as well as development to different constituencies within the school district. I'd like to also thank and celebrate the efforts of the board to continuously support a resource that we've been using since the 2021-22 school year. As you can see, we are still having record-breaking access to these accounts. I want to also elevate the fact that usually at the mid-year point, each of our users is only accessed about 25 times, and we are already on track to break the record that we had last year with a projected $73,000 by the end. We also take a look at our anecdotal evidence of how teachers are reflecting about GoalBook's impact on their teacher effectiveness and their efficiency. And as you can see, we've had positive results, anecdotally, from the most recent one that we offered in January for the professional development related to GoalBook, and then continuously have had a pretty steady, positive response from staff. This also allows you to take a look at the distribution of how we've maximized the calendar for our professional development, and divided our time, and also found great opportunities to collaborate with building leaders to be able to provide embedded support during some of their building time around topics that could impact not only special education, but general education, teachers and their performance with all kinds of needs of students. And then also, this is just an update on our staffing globally for those teachers that are serving in the Wyandotte Cooperative, many of whom, of course, are in our district, but also those who are itinerant that serve across the districts. As you can see, we have 78% to 100%, and we have some categorical pieces that show you exactly who are in person, who might be through our MSP partners and agency, and also those who are our direct hires. So we're very excited that we're always reaching towards the 100% goal, but we do have some areas that we continue, and this was our data as of last week, and as of now, things have even changed slightly as well with some increases. We also want to just highlight the fact that there was a historic pay increase with the support of the board, and we appreciate that. We saw some great numbers of increase there, as well as the inception of our managed service provider sourcing for our agencies to help streamline the process. And now, Dr. Lori will complete the rest of our presentation.
Thank you, Dana. I would just like to give an update around our sped discipline data in Kansas City, Kansas School District. This is a compliance factor that has financial implications for our district, which is why I do believe it's very important to review this and look at our current data so we can continue to track and monitor this. So, as you see here on this slide, we have three years of data, beginning of the school year to our December 1, which is the special education count day in the state of Kansas. And what we have here, you will see from the previous years, this school year, from August to December 1, we have decreased the number of total sped suspensions to 113 suspensions throughout our district from previous years of 285. The next piece of our data is around class 1 and class 2 offenses, things like skipping, gross disrespect. And so, this is, in our code of conduct, this isn't an area that we want to not see students being suspended for. However, our data is trending down to the goal of zero. And so, you will see here for '24-'25 school year, for the same timeframe, we have had 16 sped suspensions. So, from '69 to '46 to '16. And so, I have to recognize, and I want to appreciate, the collaboration from our building leaders and our special education leaders to ensure that the decisions are aligned to the code of conduct, and that the students' needs are being addressed through their IEP. This will continue to be monitored throughout the remainder of this year. To conclude our mid-year update, I want to share progress on our sped plan of action related to the KU sped report. We have established three subcommittees that are made up of sped teachers from various levels, gifted staff, related service providers, along with myself, Dana, KU partners, and other experienced partners familiar to the work and the complexities of special education. We have been meeting monthly in the evenings, two to three hours, sometimes a little longer, to collaborate and engage in very deep conversations about some of our challenges. But what I appreciate most with working with our stakeholders is that we are starting to shift from just voicing concerns and complaints to now brainstorming and developing solutions. This is not easy work, but this is necessary work to ensure that information is shared accurately, that there is a better understanding around the why some of the decisions are being made, and the importance of getting feedback and perspective from our staff who have their day-to-day experiences. So, it is my hope that we continue to progress forward with how we serve our students and families through this collaboration. I thank you for this time that we had to give you an update, and as I said earlier, I do look forward to our much more in detail update at the end of the school year. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time for you?
Thanks so much, Dr. Lori. Would open the floor to questions and discussion. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, and thank you. I have four questions, please.
Okay.
On Slide 8, with the comments from your external survey question, are these responses automated-generated, or they were originally written by the?
So, Dr. Nguyen, those are actually comments that teachers have input on their own, and they're just captured here in this document. And this is provided by an external evaluator associated with GoalBook. So, GoalBook's not involved. We're not involved. That data is sent to an external group so that there is anonymity for our educators.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Now, for Slide 10. Maybe I am reading this correctly, may have, or not. But what will be the impact, and you won't know until it happens, if it happens, of the numbers with the dissolution of the current co-op?
We do know that there will be some staff that currently are hired by the district that will go to the other districts once the dissolution has been approved by the state. Currently, most of those staff directly work with those districts, and they don't necessarily all work with Kansas City, Kansas students. But we do have some staff that serves all three districts, and so the school districts that are looking to dissolve from the cooperative are responsible and will be looking to hire their own related service providers. They currently already hire their teachers, their parents, their sites, and other staffing. So, the only staff that we would be talking about in this situation are related service providers. And anyone that they are not able to directly hire, we continue to work in collaborative for contracted services and things of the sort like that. Right now, there is no impact because all of this has to be proved through the state before there's any dissolution.
Okay, so with the knowledge you do have, take one of these boxes and provide a specific example with what you just said, please. You know what I'm asking you?
Yes, I do. Thank you. For instance, if you want to take a look at the box that says "Adaptive PE, Adaptive PE Assistant Music Therapist and Audiologyist," these particular staff all are serving all three districts currently. So, in the event that the state has approved for any membership district to exit the cooperative, that district will be hiring their own staff based on their staffing needs. These staff will remain in our district to continue to serve. The 91% of the students that I discussed are still currently here in KCK.
Okay, because of why? If they currently serve all three, what gives you the assurance that they will continue to be here in 500?
Because the majority of those students that they serve day-to-day are here in KCK. It's very few out in the membership districts.
So, if they went to the membership district, it wouldn't be a full-time job because they wouldn't get reimbursed for, they would just get reimbursed for the number of kids that they serve? So, that, the example she... So that, the example she shared there, will probably be one of those things where they will want to contract with us to continue the services. But if you were looking at another related service provider, I don't know, like the OTs, if they currently have a full-time occupation therapist that is employed through us, that person, because they're supporting only that district, would more than likely go work directly for that district, and that would not impact
Right.
our staffing.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Where's your next slide? On slide 13 of your three subcommittees?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you keep minutes and/or, and/or record these meetings?
We have notes. We have an identified note taker at these meetings, and so they capture the notes and all of our discussions at the meetings.
And what are the dates of the next meeting? And are these public meetings?
No, these are not public meetings. These are meetings just with the stakeholders, the teachers and the staff that I named earlier, and we just meet here in the evenings.
And what are the dates of your next meetings?
I had grabbed my cell phone. Let's see. Give me just a minute. While she's looking at that, one of the things we can capture and share with the board in the end of the week is all of the dates that they've already met since this summer. One, as an entire group, and then two, as the subcommittees. The subcommittees were established at different points. And in our last large group meeting, those, they give report outs on progress, take feedback, and make adjustments. But we can provide all the past dates, and she can share the current scheduled dates.
Yes. So let me, I just got one more group to look up.
Okay, you can provide it to Dr. Stubblefield.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And I guess the question for you, to you, Dr. Stubblefield, since that was an audit, a report, or whatever you call that, in what format are you going to provide the board with kind of a reassessment and/or Mr. Lopez, perhaps the board itself could revisit the audit? So either question.
So by June, we should have, like, there are clear goals for each committee, things around staffing protocol, caseload, lots of different things. The June report, we will be able to provide an update on how those specific issues were resolved. We will also be able to say, and this is the work that will have to continue. One of the things that multiple people have talked about is while we're addressing the specifics, this is one of those committees that I think will just stay in place and eventually, probably, maybe quarterly, then semester, just to make sure that we don't fall into a cycle of not checking in because things evolve, things happen, and adjustments have to be made. But we should be able to provide an update as to where we are in June because we started in July or August, so it'll be about 12. So we'll provide an update at that time of, here are the goals that they accomplished, here are the things still in the works, here's their plan for continuing to meet. Because a lot of these, some of the concerns are adaptive, and they, we need to have checkpoints because we have processes in place. Are we consistently following our processes? Or when something happened because people are human, how are we addressing it and those kind of things? I think until we have a system and trust in those kind of things, we'll just continue to meet for, maybe not as frequently because we'll have clarity on certain things, but we will need to continue to meet just for post-checks.
I mean, I think if we're getting that report in June, I think it would, if the board would like to really do a deeper dive after that or at that meeting, I know summer gets a little tight with other budget discussions and things that we're taking on, but I think if the board would like to, I know we try to schedule at least two retreats during the year. I think that would be either dedicate a board meeting where we really don't have much else on the agenda to be able to do a deep dive on the audit and the report that comes out, the findings, next steps, and/or add it to an agenda, or a retreat, as a retreat agenda item for the board to review and discuss as well. But I think it would be great to allow, to have that time to be able to hear the report and then do a deeper dive within the audit to see what else is missing, or what other information we'd like to know, or to see what we've been able to accomplish since that audit happened.
Okay, thank you. And I forgot to ask you, Dr. Stubblefield, are there budgetary implications to the dissolution of the co-op?
The co-op pays for the services that we provide, and so when they, when Piper is the initial one that's dissolving, the money that they are paying us to provide those things would then go to Piper if it's approved, but it would not impact the students in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools or our staff because we are funded based off that. So they pay us service fees so that Dr. Laurie's team does a lot of their state reporting and those kind of things, and then like when we do the related service and they're employed by us. So once that's dissolved, that, what they're paying for no longer exists. So it should not impact the district negatively. That's one of the things that KSD look at, looks at. It's to ensure that the district that is leaving and the host district both are financially stable to move forward. If they're not, KSD won't approve it.
But we have excess costs anyway. So have you, have you factored in the 20 million excess cost that we, for sped, that we pay now?
That would still be there based off of our students because our excess cost comes, it's specific for our students.
Right, so you don't know if those additional or fewer students or fewer costs are going to perhaps reduce the excess cost? You haven't, you don't know that yet? Perhaps, perhaps.
Shouldn't because each entity has like a specific amount allocated to it. So our excess cost will still be our excess cost, Piper.
No, 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 not that it will be the same. We're going to still own our excess cost. I'm saying the value, the amount of the excess cost. You haven't, haven't been able to think that far ahead.
No, we have. So what we present to KSTE, they all evaluate that to make a determination. When we look at it, it shows that we would be fine.
Yeah. I don't, just, just to add on to that, I do not anticipate that we will have a reduced XX cost due to them exiting once that, if that is approved. Only, and my rationale behind that is that currently what they are paying into us is for specific programs that are shared, and they currently do not have any of those students in the district in those programs. So there is no anticipation that the XX cost would be reduced by them exiting for that reason.
So it may actually increase, may stay the same?
Yeah, I mean, I would, it's going to be based on our numbers that we're actually serving in the district, which are KCK students.
But you have considered those?
Yes, I have, I have considered that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Russell.
Yeah, I just have a few questions, and a couple of them are clarifying questions. I thought with the last resolution that the board approved at our last meeting, and this is probably a great question, that that was the approval of Piper dismissing or leaving the co-op.
Yeah, so right now-
I just wanted to clarify that.
So right, right now, Piper is, desires to leave the co-op, to exit the co-op. They've adopted a resolution to submit the process to the state to do that. Both UST 500 and the Bonner Springs School District have adopted similar resolutions, agreeing to let Piper withdraw from the co-op. So the next step of that is that there is a package of information or an application, whatever you want to call it, that goes to the state Board of Education for them to review and determine whether they're going to allow Piper to withdraw from the co-op or not. That documentation is in the process of being put together. Most of that is being put together by the Piper School District. We're targeting, at this point, March to try to get that into the state.
Okay, appreciate that. Another thing, and again, it probably won't self-produce itself right now, is an updated org chart for the department. In past presentations, it's been there. I know there have been some transitions. That would be great to see that. And then going to slide 12, I applaud the team for this data improving. I guess my question is, what are the tangible things that we have put in place for this such a dramatic transition? And then how do we sustain that? Because I think the data has shown that when we're almost slapped on our hands, we do a really great job of improving the data around it, but then we creep up year by year, and then we get back to that. And so I guess, what are the tangible things that we have implemented, but also what is our plan to sustain the data as it currently stands?
Thank you for that question. So last year, we implemented a process that was new where the special education coordinators consult with the building leaders, or whoever the administrator is that is dealing with this discipline situation. They have a process where they reach out to our department, they process through what the situation is. We collaboratively look at the IEP, we provide recommendations, things for them to consider, alternative to suspensions that aligns to what those students need. And then we give that back to the administrator to discuss, and then they determine at that point that, you know, based on the students' needs, based on the situation that occurred, this does not warrant a suspension. Instead, we're going to follow the student code of conduct, and we're going to try all those restorative practices before we decide to suspend a student. That, to me, has been the most impactful part of how this data is continuing to get better. We, we are sustaining that because we started it again this year, and what I am seeing, because I am included on every single one of those emails, I am seeing now that buildings are having to reach out less because they've gone through that process, that thinking through the IEP, looking at those restorative practice, looking at those options that are in the student code of conduct, and now they don't have to send as many emails requesting for a consultation because they feel confident, they have efficacy to make a decision that's best for that student in that moment. We believe that if we continue to do that, building capacity, empowering our building leaders, that this will be a situation that we will not have to continually face far as the implications, the financial implications that we talked about three years ago.
Awesome, I appreciate that response, thank you. Could you talk to us a little bit? One thing that we heard a lot about was parents and understanding and access, and so we had the phone line. We implemented that, and then now we've implemented huddles?
Sped talks.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. Huddles might be her thing.
No, it's still a huddle.
Okay, okay. Could you talk to us a little bit about what you're seeing, what you're hearing? Do you see, are you hearing less from folks talking about understanding access points and making sure that their students are getting the minutes? Could you just talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes, and so I implemented this school year sped talk where parents get to join me three times within a day, based on their schedule. They join virtually, and I educate them on special education law. I educate them on the process and the procedures of our district and what they should expect when they come to an IEP as a parent and as a participant. We've had parents join us, matter of fact, I have one coming up this week again, and they come in, they answer those questions. I have Spanish interpretation right there on the call to be able to take questions and take answers. I also have that as my presentation slides, and the feedback that I have gotten has been really tremendous. My last parent that joined said she's bringing 50 people this week to join because she said this is what our families need. And I always tell them, I really keep it real because I'm born and raised here, and I'm a parent first, and it's important that the parents understand that they have the power. They are meaningful, they should be meaningfully participating in their kids' IEP. But what I have found is that our parents don't always understand the language. They don't always understand their rights. And I believe, just as a parent first and as a community member, that that's my job to empower our parents, and we just got to be ready as a system when our parents are empowered and they're questioning and they're asking, we got to be ready to respond to that. And that's been part of the work that I've been trying to do with creating systems for staff in the district, but also being a supportive member of the community and supporting our parents. So I continue to see that increase as the year goes by.
Thank you, thank you. I will also acknowledge, I have, my phone ain't blown up about it, so you know if I ain't calling you, that means no one has actually said anything. I guess in my last question, we're all here for student achievement and student outcomes. This presentation did a really great job of showing our professional development, our staffing, and talking a little bit on like our red flags that we've had over the last couple of years. What this presentation did not talk about was student achievement and how we're closing that gap. I'm not really asking for a response. I think there are people who are watching who would like to have that information, and I know, and I want to acknowledge, that in our quarterly updates, that that information is provided in a bigger scope of our entire population, but I just wonder if there's a way that we can provide some of that mid-year data for folks who have watched historically our sped updates, and we get that information, to be able to share that information out, but then maybe in the June update, make sure that we give that full picture for the year if we can.
Absolutely, but I do want to speak on that because we were just in a district, a district meeting on yesterday. I wanted to say it was our Extended Leadership and Learning where we took a deep dive in looking at our, our state data and how our students are performing. And in my particular group with my colleagues, we decided to look at special education and how are they performing? What is their academic outcomes look? And so we looked up math and ELA, and what we found in, it's looking at that data, is that from '23 to '24, our students who were at level one, it was about 95%, 92 or 95%. But in 2004, we reduced down to 75%. We had a 20-point decrease for students that were performing in level one that moved to level two. And then we had-
I just want to clarify that you meant 2024.
You said 2004.
You said 2004, okay.
No, 2000-
Listen, I just want the record to show what you meant.
Let's let the record show, yes.
Dr. Laurie, just want to clarify, were you, because the group that I was in, we were looking at a specific school, was it?
Oh, that is correct. So that, it was a specific school that I was working in. And so I will, we were working with Schlegel, and that's my alma mater, and so I chose Schlegel, and we looked at that data. But that is an example of how those students at that building was performing according to their non-disabled peers. And we also had data to show that we had a jump for about 4% of students performing proficiency at, in special education jumped to 7% the following year. So we will gladly be able to share all of that data in our end-of-the-year report.
Thank you.
And it may not hurt to get it earlier because just as you have it, we need it.
So is that the, is that the request to-
Well, I'd like to have it. I don't know about them, but I'll, I'll take it.
All right.
I can either get, I ask you publicly here, or I can do an open records request, so, you know?
We can do it.
If something, if it's good, then you should be willing to-
Oh, I'm willing.
All right.
I'm willing, the good and the bad. We're willing to show because we're working really hard to improve outcomes for students with disabilities.
So Mr. Lopez, you can respond to that, but I gladly take the information.
There are other board members who would?
So I will say, the data is readily available. A lot of it, she's referring to the CAP data. We did share that data like district level in August or something.
Did you pull out sped?
Yes.
Okay, then it's just a matter of reprint. It's not a matter of having to compile again, it's a matter of reprint.
Yes, we can provide it, but also just want to remind you, we'll be happy to- But also, just want to remind you, we'll be happy to share. You have access to this data on the data dashboards that are out there, and you can see it at any time. But we can definitely provide the hard copies or the link.
Or you can provide the link, either way you go.
Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
And I just a comment. It's interesting observation, Mrs. Russell, that when Mr. Lopez, now, you brought it up for the data, but when Mr. Lopez says, "Do you want it?", you remain silent. That's just interesting observation, which I find interesting. So, I gladly take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? One, one follow-up, and Ms. Russell took point by point a lot of the questions I was going to ask. So, thank you for expanding on a lot of that. Curious, and I know we talk about it quite a bit, and again, I don't have to necessarily discuss it tonight. But one thing that we talk about within the district is around our culture climate within district. How are we doing? How are we improving on that? And even within departments and how we're working together. Just curious what, as you've been working through some, addressing some of the issues, some of the challenges, and also, working through the opportunities that, like, I love the sped talks and some of these other pieces. How are we seeing, are we seeing an improvement in culture climate within the work within our sped department? And then, how does that translate into our overall culture climate? And then, also, just to piggyback on the parent engagement, how are we looking at that, addressing kind of how parents feel? I mean, again, the sped talks sound great, and it sounds like you're having some phenomenal conversations with parents and families. But again, just identifying any challenges and opportunities around how we engage and continue to build that culture climate for our parents and families within sped. Just, I think, as we as a board continue to look at and address culture climate issues, how we retain staff and then attract new staff, and again, how we work, the cross-pollination of the work that we have as a district and in interdepartmental work, what that looks like. And there's a lot to unpack up there, I'm sure.
And I'll jump in because that's something systematically that we are looking at. Currently, we do survey all of our buildings, but we have not sent out a survey in a few years about departments. And that is something that honestly, Dr. Jones and I had a conversation about a few weeks ago. And that's something we plan to do so we can have some baseline and continue to do that on an annual or biannual basis. Because we pull it from the schools, but we don't necessarily, we haven't consistently done it as a system outside of like audits and the environmental scan. But that is something that Dr. Jones and myself and some others have talked about. So, anything that we would be sharing would be subjective around like what people are sharing with us. And I will say, like, there's good and bad. There are things that we're navigating through. But for us to have some consistent data points to see overall where we are, that's a next step for us as a system, not just for sped, but multiple departments.
Thank you. And I don't want to, if there was, if there was anything you were going to share, I didn't want to gloss over it. And I don't expect an answer or anything now, but, okay. The other, just as a follow-up around, and I appreciate you sharing like language support that you're providing to families because I think that's something that's come up, especially with all the different dialects and languages in our district, the growing refugee populations that we see coming into our district and our community. And what I've noticed, I was having a conversation with, and apologize for not asking this ahead of time, but just anecdotally, I was talking with someone who works with a refugee population that is growing here in Wyandotte County, and talking through a lot of the cultural differences in how they perceive and receive, not just sped, but other supports, right? And I guess maybe this is a doctor's double, just a greater question. How do we continue to support our different cultures, cities, races, who receive those resources differently and/or think that's not something for, or may not know their rights, or may not know that that's something they have access to? I think that's just, how do we continue to make sure that we're educating all of our families around? This is an expectation, a responsibility of ours as a district, to make sure we're taking care of our students and families and that they have rights to all of these supports. So, again, not necessarily a sped question, but you know it comes up.
I think in general, what we do, we do rely on, depending on the supportive services that they need, be it sped or whatever, our welcome center, our multilingual department, Dr. Selena's Willicks and her team. As schools reach out to us, we, and we lean on community partners as well to help us navigate that. But each situation is a little different, and so, we lean into all of those different entities. If there are specific groups that are sharing information or having difficulties, if you let us know, we can be intentional about scheduling some time. I know I have met, myself and the other superintendents in Wyandotte County, we have met with specific groups that have shared like questions, concerns, or how to navigate, or they've provided information to us around like certain holidays and those kind of things that may be different. And then, we share that with our team so that the building principals and others are aware. So, if there's a specific group that is navigating that, if you connect them with us, we can make sure that we sit down and provide the necessary resources or help them to navigate our system.
And I would just say, it's specific to sped. The state, and the state and federal levels have very clear laws where if it comes to special education, parents' rights must be in their native language so that they can have access and can review and understand. And so, I follow those same expectations across the state and across the United States. And then, I also utilize the state resource of Families Togethers. That is a free advocate service to any parent in the state. And so, often, I refer parents to them because they can get them a local advocate to show up in their language and English. And so, that is, those are just some ways that I do try to consider all cultures when it comes to special education.
Thanks so much. Any additional questions?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Brownly Page.
I have a question, but I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Laurie. I know it hasn't been easy. You inherited something big, but you continually keep working to make it better. And just want to thank you and your staff for what you do. Because we're all trying, and that's the key. But you got something, I commend you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brownly Page. Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Hey, next board, we are on Agenda Item 8. We have come to Board Policy, where we are taking on a few board policies. And I will hand this over to Mr. Goheen.
So, we've got a couple of different things that we need to do tonight. A few of these policies that are up for third read, we're going to need to hold over. But two of them are ready for approval in third read and final adoption. Those two are BCE and BCBI. There were no comments or changes to those two policies from the second read and no updates necessary. So, we would ask that those two be approved for final third read.
And that's BCBI and BCE?
That is correct. That's Public Participation and Board Communications, or Board Community Engagement.
Thank you. Would you like to take, can we take these up both together?
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Goheen? Is there a motion to approve for third read policies, BCBI and BCE?
So, moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or further discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownly Page?
Wanda Brownly Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
The next group of policies I would like the board to take a look at are the KASB policy updates as we've modified them to comport with the district's current policies. And that's Item H on, or 8H. And if you open that up and look, there's a list of policies. I'll go through each one so that you guys can understand what we're doing with them.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Can you tell me, so what are we doing with the A through B?
The others we're holding over.
Okay.
Okay.
The four, when?
Next board meeting. Okay. So, the first one under KASB policy updates for first read is Policy CNA. CNA is the Preservation of Documents. KASB has made suggested changes to modify this from holding or not destroying documents to the more positive phrasing of it, of Preservation of Documents. To keep consistency with KASB's policies, it's our recommendation that you adopt that one for first read. I think I'll just go through all of these, and if there's ones that you guys want to hold out, we'll hold out. The next one's Policy DE, and this is the Fraud Prevention and Investigation Policy. KASB has included a couple of revisions. The revisions are in red on the drafts of the policies that are in the board agenda. And again, these are straight from KASB's recommended policies, and we would recommend that you adopt those for first read. Board Policy DFAC is similar. This one is Federal Fiscal Compliance. Again, KASB has made some recommendations to the language changes. It's somewhat interesting, they took a blank out and actually put the superintendent or designee in. I think our current policy actually had the blank in it because we had adopted KASB's policy previously. So, that's an improvement, and you'll see the others again in red. We would recommend that these policy changes be adopted for first read, or accepted for first read, rather.
Greg?
Yes.
In Policy DFAC, second paragraph, it says-
Hold on, let me go back.
Sorry.
You're fine. DFAC, second paragraph, got it?
It says designate, and I think that's supposed to say designate.
I think it is as well. We'll-
So, just a house key.
We'll, we will correct that for second read, assuming it gets accepted for first. Thank you for catching that.
I've got a question.
Yep, absolutely.
What is sufficiently? How do you measure, well, accounting records.
Oh, yes.
This must mean, what, how do you, how do you quantify sufficiently?
That's a good question. I mean, they're proposing to swap out adequately for sufficiently. I would suggest that sufficiently perhaps means more than adequately. But that's a place where the board might want to consider having more specific language than what KASB is recommending. I think the intent of this is to make, the specific phrase you're referring to is, "The district will maintain accounting records, identify the amount, source, and expenditure of funds provided for federally assisted activities." I think if the board wants something more detailed on that, to make sure it's clear on what the records or the accounting records show, we could look at language to try and make that more specific. I think that would make sense.
Good. Do you need a motion for that?
I don't know that we need a motion for it. I'm going to make a note of it right here and try and bring back some different language on that provision for the second read, if that's acceptable. And I'm happy to take suggested language on that from anyone who wants to suggest language.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Lopez?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part. I was-
What I said is, what I said is that, what I would suggest is, we still accept this for first read. I've got a note here to come up with some alternative language for the word sufficiency under the accounting records, and also suggest that if anybody's got suggested language for that, please forward it to me, and I'll try and incorporate that into it. I don't think there's a reason to make a change on the fly here.
Thank you.
Policy DFH is a new policy proposed by KASB, which is, relates to fundraising activities. This is not a policy that the district currently has. Because it's a recommended policy by KASB, we have included it. So, it's certainly one the board can consider adopting for first read or not.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah, so, this policy, the way that it's proposed, there are multiple things that I think the board should consider. One is related to current grant-making practices. I'd have to go back. I think we did some work on the gifts policy.
You did.
But we've also implemented an internal policy as it relates to donors' shoes, Amazon, all of those things. And so, I guess there are some, without trying to strike my memory right now, I just wanted to make sure that Lisa is consulted on this policy as it relates to our current feedback for staff in that direction. The other concern that I have on Page 2 is as it relates to booster, PTAs, PTOs, any other fundraising entity that works on behalf of our students in order to do. There's some language that just implies that all of those things are like, where was it? I think it's the second bullet point. Money raised or items secured by a fundraising campaign by a person or entity, and the word entity is where my legal thought process goes because those are all separate entities of the school district. Acting on behalf of the school or the district will be the property of the district. And so, then, it made me ponder the thought of if this section right here that talks about those things, if there should be a separate paragraph for entities. Are you following me? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I wrote, I wrote a note down.
Okay. I don't know what I wanted to say or my suggestion, but those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, when I saw this policy, I, this was one that I sort of assumed that the board would have some discussion on because you had recently gone through the changes to the gift policy and some of the other fundraising activities. I think it's worth having a policy on this, but I had assumed at the front end that the board would have more input and probably more discussion on this one.
And I think I wanted to give you my input, but I wanted to hear what you said was the recommendation for this policy because we didn't get that little diaphragm thing this time.
Yeah, so, on this particular one, I think it's a good idea to have a fundraising policy, whether you specifically want to adopt the one that KASB is suggesting or whether you want to modify that to how this particular district operates in connection with some of those things. I think that's, I think this one is a good one for some healthy discussion by the board as opposed to just going with KASB's recommendation. But this was not one that, I just want to get it out in front of the board to start with. And then, I think, I think it is worth some looking at.
And I will also just say that, yes, the policy says some things, and then, it feels like it tries to clarify at the end. But a person who works on behalf of the school district, based on our risk management practices and policies, it says that they should not be the sole proprietors of a entity. And so, that last paragraph, it tries to tell me who's acting on behalf of the district as though it's just an employee, but that would conflict with our current practice of, so, just, I agree. There's probably some additional conversation.
I don't think it matches exactly what you guys have come up with for how you want those activities to take place in USD 500. But I thought it was a good starting spot for conversation.
Dr. Nguyen?
Question, Greg. Do we allow an employee to use online fundraising campaigns for personal items, personal reasons?
I don't believe that we do. I think the only way we allow anything of that nature, and I'm not, I'm not really sure I'm aware of any fundraising activities of that nature, but if they related to some specific student activity, for example, if we were raising funds for the debate team to go to state or something like that, I suppose that might be a place where something like that would happen, but not for personal items. I'm not aware of that.
Right, so, that sentence is strange because while we may not, this says, this implies that it could happen. Because while we may not, this says, this implies that it could happen.
Right.
So, that, that first sentence of your second to last paragraph is weird.
Yeah, and I will just add, my interpretation was like, personal classroom or like, I'm, I also-
It doesn't say. It says personal items.
Yeah.
Personal reasons. If it's for the classroom, it would then be on behalf of the school or the district.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But, you know, like decorations, and I think we've had this conversation. People go buy all these decorations for their class that may be considered personal and not-
You wouldn't have an online fundraising campaign for, for class?
Well, some people do.
Oh, fine.
Well, I'm not saying some people here, I'm saying like, some people, that's just what they do. They're saying, hey, I'm preparing my-
It'd be for that class.
But, they take those items with them when they leave.
Well, then we have to decide if that is legal or not or permissible.
I'm with you, yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's part of the discussion. And again, this one is, I just took straight what KSB proposed, so there's no tweaking that I've done to this at all. I think the board needs to take a hard look at this one and, and start looking at things that you want or don't want or if language is confusing, point it out, we'll try and clarify it or make changes to it. The next one is ICA, which is pilot projects. Again, this is, language is being added to make it clear that the Student Data Privacy Act applies to any student surveys that are conducted as part of any pilot projects that we would do. This is again, recommended language from KSB and we would recommend that this be adopted for first read.
Mr. Lopez, I mean, yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Mr. Goheen. There is a survey that social behavioral team gives that I think the sentence around attitudes, values. Oh, what is that survey called? And it's like a, I can tell you. So, I just wanted our student services to be consulted on this one because there are some, oh, Infinite Campus, where are you? There is a feelings or a, that's not the word I want to use, but there is a, a survey that is given that parents give permission for their student to take the survey. That would not be academic, I think it's social, I cannot-
Community that cares? Savers?
Thank y'all. I should have just looked at y'all because I'm really struggling, so, yes. So, that's a conversation for that one.
And I can, the, the, the team can see it, they can look at it and we can give feedback to Greg.
I'm good with that.
Next one is policy IDACA. And this is just a technical update, getting rid of the now outdated citation to the Kansas statute. It's just the wrong citation because the statute book has changed. So, that's all that's happening in that policy, otherwise it remains the same. So, we'd recommend that change be adopted. The next two go together and these, these are two that, we, again, we're just going with KSB's recommended changes, but I do think these warrant a closer look by the board and probably to make sure that this is what the board wants for this school district and these relate to self-administration of medications by students. You already have a policy on this, it is KSB's policies. There are some changes being made to this, but we always want to make sure that it's consistent with what the board and the staff want with this and it relates to the, you see the, the majority of the added languages in the down, the bottom end of it, dealing with over the counter medications. So, we would recommend that you adopt it for first read, but we do want to make sure that this is one that the board does take a healthy look at. Same thing with the next one, JGFGAA, a lot of letters there. This deals with whether or not the board, and this is a policy that we have not previously had at this district, but it deals with whether we want to maintain at our schools a stock supply of emergency medications such as epinephrine, beterol, and some of the other more commonly needed medications and how you want to approach that if that is something that the board wants to do. Again, we're putting it out there because it's a recommended policy from KSB and we think you should adopt it for first read, but I think you should take a close look at it, make sure it's what you want to adopt for the school district. So, that's the list of the KSB policies that we are recommending that the board consider for first read and I'll answer any questions the board has on it.
Can I just insert, for the stock supply of emergency medication, I can follow up with Ms. Bates because there is, there would be a cost associated with it if we don't currently have that. So, I can follow up with her, see if she can project out what that looks like so that the board does adopt it as policy. We also make sure that we have the necessary funds allocated for it. I say I will follow up with Ms. Bates.
No, I appreciate that. That was what I was going to mention is having her look at that. And then at the, on the second page-
Which, which policy?
Under protection from liability. A physician or mid-level, like, there are some specific around like, who can do those things and just making sure that the language that's utilized, and it's in here multiple times, that those are actual people that we already have on staff or going back to the costs associated with it. Because it, as it should, there looks like there are some administration, but also some making sure that the proper people have the access or the determination to administer those things. And then I think the other piece that I wanted us to look at with this one was related to the Narcan policy that we approved and making sure that the language was similar because I think there's a stock supply piece in the Narcan policy and I don't know the policy off the top of my head. There's a stock part and there's a training part to both of those and so-
Correct.
Making sure they kind of mirror each other, so, in a sense to where it makes the most sense.
Any additional comments or questions for Mr. Goheen on any of these policies? Not, is there a motion to accept for first read the, do I have to name all of the policies, Mr. Goheen? Or can I just say KSB policy updates as presented?
I think you could make it as you suggest the motion. And then we would want, we would want the minutes to reflect the actual policy by letters, but we can, we can show that in the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept for first read the KSB policy updates as presented?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and is, just again, reminder, please make sure you take some time to review those policies that came up for discussion specifically, the fundraising in these last couple of policies, but all just as we've come back on this, for the second read. So, any questions or discussion on that?
And you will have revisions on the second read?
I will have revisions on the second read and if anybody has any suggested revisions, call me or email me so that I can make sure I, I catch those. I've got the ones that you spoke about today, but if there's any others.
D, you keep leaving off the finance committee.
That's, that's true, the committee could certainly look at it.
It was never added and we voted, keep it. So, I didn't understand why that particular committee was left off.
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's on there.
No, if you look at it again, it's not on there.
Were we addressing KSB policies?
Yeah, right now the-
Oh, yeah, no.
But, you asked if there was anything-
No, that, that's why it's not, that's why, yeah, that's not why for third read.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I-
Motion is just-
Yeah, so the motion, and I'll address that here, Ms. Bradley Page.
You stopped, I didn't think you were going to vote.
No, 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 I'm sorry. So, any questions on the KSB policies, further questions or discussion? Here, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Goheen, do we need a motion to table the other policies since we tabled them for this meeting specifically?
I think that, I think that would be cleanest, so-
Okay.
Table CJ, BDA, FC, BBC, and GARID.
And the reason, Ms. Bradley Page, there were a couple of pieces that were missing, as you pointed out regarding finance committee, because that was something we discussed and it's not in the, in the memo, in the policy that's in the memo. So, we won't, we're pulling those because there's, there's a couple of pieces we have to tweak.
We've done it the second time and I thought, okay, what's going on? Why can't we add that, is that simple?
Yep, no, absolutely. So, that's why we're pulling those and is there a motion to table those policies?
So, moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion?
With tabling would also include correction.
Yes, to make sure that we have the corrected, those corrections were already, or those changes were already approved at the previous read, so we'll have the corrected versions for the next time. Thank you. Additional questions? Not, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, next we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to share. First, I do want to share that Commissioner of Education, Dr. Wendy Watson, and State Board member Melanie Haas were visited our district last week. Specifically, we went to Colby Bruce and they were in the Jack K. classroom and they also saw the medical, medical detectives classroom that we received the Next Era grant for last year. And we also got a chance to go to the Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center and spent some time with Ms. Turi, who you heard from earlier, and she was able to share some valuable information with both of them regarding early childhood and significance and importance. Our recruiters from Human Resource Department attended the Greater Kansas City Veterans Career Fair today at the Overland Park Convention Center. The team is also hosting a career fair on next Saturday, February 8th, from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. here at Central Office. If you know anyone that is interested in joining the district, please have them to come out. I believe there's a sign up somewhere and this is both for certified and classified opposition, so this will be the first of many. The students at Quandero Elementary School were treated to a special guest, treated to very several special guests last Friday. The Kansas City chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Incorporated read a book and visited with students. It was a part of the fraternity's national program called Room to Read. Some of the fraternity members are alumni of KCKPS or currently work in our district. We want to thank them for coming back and reading to our students and their partnership. We're asking you to save the date, coming soon, our second annual Unity in the Community event. This event is designed to provide resources to our families about opportunities for their students during the summer. It will be Saturday, April 26, 2025, at JC Harmon High School and I believe it's from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., but we'll keep sharing that information. A couple of things that we have gotten questions for, from both our community members, staff members, and families. Earlier today, we received a memorandum saying that there was a pause on all of federal funded grants. We continue to get additional information right now and I believe because of a suit that was filed, there's a pause on the pause. As we get additional information, we will share, we did get information prior to the pause on the pause that there were certain programs that were not impacted and that included like Spark, Early Childhood, and some others, but the information has changed multiple times today. We will try to provide clarity, but I know as I was coming into the meeting, I was getting questions and I was notified that there may be a pause on the pause. I don't know if that's changed since we've been here, but we will keep the board and others informed as we get information. Lastly, I just wanted to share, we shared a message with our students and parents last week regarding the recent changes in the federal policy on immigration that has a potential impact on schools. We want our parents and students to know that KCKPS remains committed to ensuring the education safety of all students. All students have a constitutional, or have a constitutional protected right to receive an education. We will continue to adhering to legal requirements and federal law and board approved policies regarding investigations or arrest on school grounds. Our administration will comply with all federal and state laws protecting student information and safety. And just want to clarify that the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Police Department does not act on behalf of federal agencies. Federal agencies have their own officers, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a couple of items for me, board. Don't forget, this Friday, we do have a board retreat at MVP Law Offices. Thank you, Mr. Goheen, for hosting us. That starts at 9:00 a.m., it should be on your calendar. If you have any questions, please reach out to Ms. Smith or Dr. Stubblefield. We'll see you on Friday afternoon for that. And then also, you should have received an invitation from Mr. Birch regarding the Gold Star Award on social emotional wellness and, and, and the work that the district has done around that. It's the, being the first district to receive a Gold Star Award in the state of Kansas and so, they're having a little celebration on April, February 11th, right before the board meeting at 4:00 p.m. here at Central Office. So, all board members are invited to attend and welcome to attend and anyone else that would like to come and celebrate the great work that's been done in that area. And then I'll just add to, as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, I think it's important for all of our families and staff and students to know that our district is a, is, is a place that welcomes all students and we will do our, our best to, to continue to educate and take care of our students regardless of who you are. And nothing has changed in that matter and, and we, we welcome you and we want you in our classrooms and will continue to do our job of educating our students, educating our families, and taking care of our students and families and staff here. So, we appreciate all the work that you do and we want you to know that you're safe here. So, with that, I will open it up to our board members. Ms. Bradley Page.
I too want to thank Quandero Elementary School, the principal, Mrs. Thompson, and the past principal, but she's still there, still working hard. Principal Dees and one of our administrators now, thank you for what you did for Quandero and thank the men of Kappa Alpha Psi. And I'd just like to issue a challenge to the Divine Nine. We all need to step up and do something and help the kids in our community. They need to see themselves and the men did a phenomenal job, very creative, talked about their jobs, things that they were doing and the importance of reading. It didn't matter what occupation you went into, you got to know how to read and how powerful that was and the kids received it, they were excited. And again, Divine Nine, we got some AKAs in the house and, oh, as usual, okay. And deltas and what have you. We all should be here, somewhere, somehow. And if it's not a sorority or organization, if you love kids, want to support them, that's something we can do. If you can read, they need your help and encourage them to read. And the other meeting that Dr. Nguyen and myself attended at the legislature dealt with health for the Wyandotte delegation. If you haven't seen it on the news already, TB, we're having a problem in our state and the largest number is in our county, Wyandotte County. We talked about this last year and we were told the Health Department would let us know and they've kind of ping ponged us around that we found out that another group in Johnson County was taking that over and dealing with it. But, people need to be aware that it's out there and to protect yourself. We had a lot of delegates didn't attend today because they're sick. It's either the flu or it's TB and it's hard to tell which one because everybody's coughing and you don't know what's going on, so, protect yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley Page. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I just have a couple of celebratory announcements that I'd like to make. First off, it- First off, it is School Board Appreciation Month, but I also want to take a moment to recognize a person who has seven bosses, who also celebrated a birthday last week. And so, I know that we have shared our birthday celebrations up here on the dais, so I just want to take a moment and say, happy birthday, Leslie. We hope it was a fun and memorable celebration. And then also, go Chiefs, the Chiefs won. And so, excited to have that excitement in Kansas City. But I also wanted to share that in coordination with our very own Prepare House, as a fun memento to end the month. We have these really great shirts that were made from our students at Prepare House and the staff there. And so, I encourage each of us, and the shirt says, "Just a School Board Member Who Loves Kansas City Football." And so, I encourage each of you to wear it on Friday, so we can take a really great Red Friday picture, and everyone else will see us later on, hopefully next week in them. But just want to say thanks to the students. And also, this is my shameless plug for them. They are getting ready to send out a link that will have much more of their Super Bowl gear and fun things that the youth get to participate in and make. And so, it's one way that we can share the love and the great things that students here in KCKPS are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional board members, Dr. Nguyen.
Ms. Brownlee Page and I are looking forward to receiving the Wyandotte Class, Wyandotte High School Ace Class tomorrow when they come to the Capitol. And so, after they take their photo op with the governor, they will come to the House Chamber, and we will acknowledge them, and then they will be able to join the, attend the Joint House and Senate Education Committee, where Senator Petty will acknowledge them. So, hopefully, these aren't the only students that are able to come to the Capitol and see the process, the sausage being made, and understand that their future is in the hands of the folks up there. And as a follow-up to-
Dr. Nguyen, what time is that tomorrow?
They get there at 8:30.
Okay. The first presentation's at 8:30?
It says, "Arrive on the Capitol at 8:30, 8:45," and their photo op is at 9:15. We go on the House floor 11. As follow-up to what Dr. Stubblefield said, to show you how the pause has been zigzagging all day, the last comment of Dr. Hardwood in K-12 budget was that the title funds would not be paused. But then, who knows? So, zigzag is on its way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Any additional comments from board members? Thank you all for all the work and dedication and commitment that you provide. Next, we have reached item 10, Executive Sessions. Would entertain a motion to recess to executive session at 7:39 for five minutes. To include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Jones.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew. Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move by Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Russell, and questions, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess the executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act for ten minutes going in at 7:49 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Campbell. Move by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark, questions, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you.
To return to open session, please. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for seven minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Mylan. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr. Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're at time, so we're gonna have to extend. Um, alright, um, motion to return to open session?
Yes.
Ms. Russell and Ms. Clark, moved in second. It questions, Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to extend executive session for fifteen minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Mr. Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Rhonda Clark.
Rhonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Alan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
All right, Leslie, you ready?
Okay. Motion to return to open session, please. Some moved. Moved in seconded questions, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Great, thank you. Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes. Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Clark. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.